I now call the May 2nd, 2024 Yale Community School Board Meeting to order. Please stand for you like believe this.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Welcome, everyone. My name is Debbie Edwards and I am the school board president. Our agenda for this meeting is available on the Yale Community Schools website. Do we have an audience or any community comments superintendent?
No, we're going to be signed up.
Okay, so we'll get right to.
Yes, thanks for your flexibility in scheduling the special board meeting. I want to start by saying a thank you to our community group that put in a tremendous amount of work and time and treasures and their talents to help us try to get to a successful outcome of the levy. And it's certainly not because of their efforts that we're in this situation. I also want to say thank you to our staff and our community members that have supported us. We obviously have work to do. We are in a situation that we weren't necessarily expecting. You know, in my first year as superintendent, I did not have this on my entry plan to navigate a double levy failure. However, I didn't come here because I thought it was going to be easy. I came here because of the people and I'm committed to working with our our staff and our community to work through this. And as we've talked about, it's a valley and we're gonna, we're gonna get through it. So with that, I also was reminded today, I was at Fort Stephens in 4th grade and they were working on fractions. And I heard the students as a whole group say, we can do hard things. And it was just a reminder that this is going to be hard. This is going to be quite possibly the most challenging thing that this school district has ever been through. But at the same time, we're, we're going to work through it. We're going to work with our community. We're going to come out the other side of it. And you know, I look forward to the, the story of redemption and it's going to be good. Tonight, I wanted to talk about process. We're trying to really be transparent and open about the process. I will also say there's no blueprint for how to work through a double levy failure. Lots of conversations with colleagues around the state. Lots of conversations with colleagues who have been through this or experienced it as a superintendent or as staff in, in a district. A lot of folks around the state have reached out to say that they're there to support us, whatever that may look like. And so we've got a lot of people that want to help. And so we are relying on them as resources and be able to bounce ideas off of. So not only do we have great people here in Yale, there are people across the state that are just waiting for us to, to let them know how they can be helpful. I want to go through timeline this evening and, and have some conversation around what this process will look like. So we'll go to slide one. I sent a message out to staff on just yesterday, I believe, or Wednesday. And we'll be communicating with staff regularly as we have more information to share with them. We'll also be communicating with the community as we have more information to share. But wanted to share with you kind of the timeline. So tonight, our special board meeting to talk strictly about the process. Not asking you to take any action this evening or, or take any votes, but more talk about the process. Tomorrow, the levy will be officially certified. Results came out this afternoon. It did not change the outcome. Not, not very many votes left. Really, all that was left were mail-in votes. So did not change the outcome. Tomorrow, we are launching a survey for staff and community members to give us some feedback. We're going to get into more detail on that in later slide. But really, we're going to be asking folks to weigh in and share their thoughts and opinions on priorities. Next Tuesday, we'll be meeting with the leaders from our associations to talk through the process and to just continue communication with them so that they are in the loop and that we share what we know with them and are able to maybe answer any questions that come up. But we want to make sure that we're communicating with them as we move through this. Next Thursday, we have a regularly scheduled board meeting. And that is where we're going to be asking you to vote on our specific reduction in force plan. And what that means is we're going to be asking you to approve our list of positions in the district that we will be reducing. May 13th, the survey will close. And then Thursday, May 16th, we're going to ask staff and community members to come for a forum. That'll be at Yale Middle School at 6:00 PM. We'll send you information about that. And at that meeting, we plan to have the survey results and plan to have some roundtable discussions. We will have administrators at every table. And we'll have some, some conversation to look at the results of the survey, but also kind of dig deeper into priorities as we make some difficult decisions about reductions and cuts. And so we're going to ask that our staff and community come help weigh in on that. Next slide is some timelines and some things that we have to be mindful of as we go through this. We have some collective bargaining agreements. And within those bargaining agreements are requirements as far as letting staff member know, staff members know if their position is being cut or changed in any way. So these are the dates that we have to follow, at least, or sooner. And so with our teachers association, it's May 15th. They have to be notified by then. Public school employees group by May 20th. And then our office professionals by May 31st. And then the other groups listed down below do not have a timeline. So those additional reductions will also be made, but we're not bound by a timeline, even though we'll be working through all the cuts as quickly as we can do this in a very careful and sensitive way as we evaluate all aspects of the district. And so these are important to know that as we go through the process, we, we have some collective bargaining agreements that we have to follow. Next slide. I mentioned that we're going to have a survey going out. These are all the areas that we're going to be asking staff and community members to give us some feedback on. Terry and our team have been working on a survey that asks folks to share their thoughts on the priority of each one of these areas from 1 to 5. And all of these being important. But as we look to cut, you know, roughly $15 million from our budget, all of these areas will be impacted in order to do that. So we're going to be asking people to, to give us feedback on that. And then at the end of the survey, there will be a couple of opportunities for people to add additional information that maybe wasn't touched on in the questions, but maybe they've got some other thoughts and ideas. So there is a narrative part at the end that they can add pieces to that. I want to ask Terry if there's anything in additional that you want to add to the survey.
I think that you kind of described, but there's three key sections to the survey. One, they want to make sure that we have representatives of the different places where people are connected to our community. So that's where you will see students, parents and guardians, staff members of different classified, certified, representative, administrative, and then community. So we'll be able to look at the data based on those categories when we look at it. As Chris said, we've got the scaled ratings. And so here is for those categories of people's opportunity to show their level of importance. So there's the, when they see each question, they'll be able to pick 1 through 5 to identify. And then we'll be able to have some averages of those overall scores and then be able to break it down by, by the respondents and then describe the, the narrative responses. And so depending on the number of, of responses, which we do hope that we get a lot, that we will be reading quite a few comments. And so this, as we said, will go out tomorrow with our district newsletter. It will go out to all staff tomorrow. And then we'll also share it on social media so the community has that opportunity to access it. And it will also be on our website.
And if you don't mind going back to the slide before that. After we have this community forum, then I think it'll be important for us to evaluate all the information we have and then make some decisions about any additional opportunities that we may need to provide for input if we need to drill down even deeper. I think we need to just be open to the idea that there may need to be some additional opportunities after the 16th for us to get even more input. Because ultimately, as the board and superintendent, we're going to be faced with some really difficult decisions to make. And so I want to make sure that we've got as much information as we can before we make those decisions. Now, knowing that, there are some things that we're not asking people to weigh in on. And, and I want to be clear on, on that. We're not asking people to weigh in on personnel issues. That's not something that we're asking the community to give us input on which position should be cut. That's something that is a, a board and superintendent and, and staff decision. We're not asking people to weigh in on salaries. Those are things that we bargain and work through the collective bargaining agreement. So we're being very intentional and open about the fact that there are some things that we are not asking for input on. And those are things that we have a lot more information internally than our community would about how those would impact our system. And so those are decisions that will be made internally. However, we will be impacting programs, will be impacting services. Like I said, all areas of our district will be impacted with the exception of two. Transportation and food services are self-sustaining. They are funded by the state. That is not something that we supplement with, with our budget. Therefore, those are not in this discussion either because those are, transportation is based on ridership. And then we are funded based on the number of students that we transport. And we are fully funded there. Food services, based on the number of students that you're serving. And so we are funded there as well. And you can't use those dollars for anything else. And so there's going to be a lot of conversation in the community about, you know, why don't you take from here and take from there? Another area is there will be some small capital projects going on next year. So then people say, well, how in the world could you be putting a new roof on a school when you're cutting positions? Well, those dollars cannot be used for general ed, personnel and other purposes. So that's something that we're going to have to communicate over and over again because I think there's a lot of misinformation. But those are three areas, transportation, food services, and then capital projects that have specific uses for those dollars and cannot be used for things outside of that. So when there are small projects going on, we'll be very intentional about our communication to continue to explain why that happens in a school district when you're making cuts.
Will the survey go on the website, our website?
That we have in the galleries of all the schools will have a link like we did for the levy. We have a landing page for the reduced education plan. We've been posting the timeline of communication and information and there will be a link there to the survey.
We're essentially doing the same thing we did during the levy where Terry kept up that levy page with frequently asked questions. All information around our reduced education plan will go on the spot on our webpage. So it's all going to be in one place. And then we're going to continue to add our communications to that as we send those out. And then as frequently asked questions come in, we'll add those there just like we did during the levy and make sure that we're sharing all that information out because there will be a lot of questions. And there will be a lot of people with opinions about how this should be done. We want to make sure that we're hearing people's opinions and considering them as we make decisions moving forward.
It's just easy when we get phone calls or stopped on the street that we have a spot to send them to.
Yeah, there's going to be a place for people to go and, and give their input. We, we get calls frequently with people wanting to, to share ideas. And I'm always willing to, to listen or meet with folks to, to learn and listen and see what we can do to not only address this challenge, but there are many people that have come forward to tell me why the levy didn't pass. And I'm more than happy to meet with anybody and listen to that as well. But we are going to create a mechanism for, for people to give their feedback and be part of the process. So I've shared a lot. What questions do you have or what are we missing? As, as you look at this list, is there anything that comes to mind that you say, you know, you, we aren't asking about this particular thing? One of the things that I also want to be clear about in this survey is we steered clear of singling out positions. I do not think it's right or fair or sensitive to our staff to provide opportunities for people to say this position shouldn't be here or that position shouldn't be here because those are real people. And you may be talking about a position, but you're talking about a person in that position. And so we tried to stay clear of specific positions and more ideas, areas. And that was our intention. So when people look at the survey and want to weigh in on a specific position, they can, they can mention that down in the narrative part, but our questions are not going to be about people.
Just off the top, non-core instructional programs, elementary, secondary. Now, will that explain under that, that heading basically? Or like athletics and activities as to what that entails?
Yes. Yeah, there is. Some of them have a little bit greater description. Give a little background or history depending on how much the person taking the survey knows. So there is some description. Others might just say, please rate their importance, rate their importance. But yes, most of them do. And the instructional, the non-core, that's broken down into two questions. One of the elementary level and one of the secondary because it does look differently at each of those levels.
Well, it's just the questions I've been asked is, does that mean, you know, and this is just.
What does it mean?
We got what does it mean? So where would be like, you mean, we're not going to have, and this is just an example. It's not the, it's like, are we going to, is art and music going to be gone in the middle school? I mean, in the elementary. So that, that would fall in underneath their, their opinion on, is it? Yes, got it.
Yeah, and, and ideally, first of all, we, we have to make sure that our classrooms have teachers. And from there, we move our way out and make sure that as best we can, we're trying to keep intact our programs. All of them are important. All of them are essential. However, making a cut this deep, they're going to be impacted. What that looks like in the end, that's something that, you know, we'll have to decide once we have all the information. But there's no way we can make cuts as deep as we need to and not impact programs.
But whatever question they made or that's near and dear to their heart, from whatever it is, will fall under some of that category.
That is our hope. We really looked at this from a really wide angle lens of, is there anything that we're not asking about in the survey? Now, also knowing when we release a survey, that's not the end of opportunities to give feedback. And so if we hear from people saying, hey, I didn't have an opportunity to weigh in on something particular. That's why I say after that forum on May 16th, as we evaluate, we may want to provide some other opportunities because some of these decisions, we have a little bit more time. Not a lot of time because we've got to create a balanced budget for you guys to adopt. But we do have more time aside from personnel decisions that we have to make, which are bound by the collective bargaining agreement. And so we want to be careful. We want to be intentional. And so if we need more time, then we can certainly provide more opportunities.
Just if I was asked a question, there'll, there'll be some underneath it.
Yeah, we, we really want to make sure that all voices are heard and have an opportunity. And so if we need to provide more opportunities or different opportunities, I want to do that. And again, if somebody says, hey, I think you're missing something on here, let us know. And then we can evaluate, how do we get feedback on that? What other questions or thoughts maybe have come to you? Whether it's email, phone call, is there anything else that we need to be considering as we are gathering information from staff, community and students? And I'm glad Lucy's here because one of the things that we're going to want, one of the things that we're going to want are students to, to fill out the survey as well. So I'm going to lean on our six student reps to help us get the word out. And in the survey, you have an opportunity to identify if you're a student, if you're a certificated staff member, classified parent, community member. And that's the level of, of detail we're asking. We're not asking people to identify themselves personally because we know some people wouldn't be comfortable sharing the feedback if they had to identify who they were. We're just asking for categories. So when we sort out the information, we can say, okay, our staff are saying this. Our families are saying this. Our students are saying this. And I think as a board, you guys are going to want to probably see what each one of those groups are saying. And then what are they saying collectively?
So the class size, I thought that was a negotiated size. So we can't say, oh, we're going to take an elementary class and put 60 kids in it. That's not what we're saying.
Correct. So that is something that's negotiated. But what we're saying is, is that something that's important to you as we go through this process? So when we sit down with our bargaining groups, that's a conversation we have about class size. And you're exactly right. That is something, specific class size is bargained and is in the collective bargaining agreement. But is that something that is important and how important is that to you to have smaller class sizes? And if we have smaller class sizes, then, you know, we look other places for reductions. And so that's why we're going to have to look at this as a whole to see what are people prioritizing and what's most important.
On the tech, on the technology, I can't remember, but were the books paid out of levy monies?
Yeah.
Chromebooks?
Yeah. So for example, with technology, we've already ordered and paid for the refresh of Chromebooks for next year. However, in next year's budget, which we are developing now, we would potentially make the decision that maybe we would skip a year and only replace ones that are damaged. And we wouldn't do the refresh that we would normally do at 6th and 9th grade and secondary. So that would be an area potentially that we would cut back in addition to potential infrastructure or software purchases or education. So technology is a big one. It's not just hardware, but it's also instruction and reaches across the district. In addition to, it falls in the instruction category at our elementary schools. We, we have instruction there that goes on with our students that's very valuable. And so that's where we need to get feedback.
Do we have, do we have curriculum adoptions coming up this year?
No. We did. However, that's something that would be one of the first things that would be taken off the table. Now, having said that, the only other change to that would be if there were something that were required or maybe mandated in some way that we needed to implement, that'd be different. But as it relates to a wholesale adoption, which also would require professional development to implement that, that would be something that we would suspend.
Yeah, he's got it pretty much. My question, I mean, I look at libraries and what does that mean? You know, if somebody is out there going, they may not even know they still have a library in each one of the buildings type of.
Yeah, really what we're getting at there is, is access, what does access look like? What does that resource look like for students? How do they access it and frequency, frequency of accessing it? How does that resource continue to be a resource for our students? And how much of a priority is it? So to clarify, and we can go back up to the slide with the timeline, please.
On Mark?
Yes. Yes, um. So tomorrow, um, the survey will be launched uh, again Tuesday meeting with association leaders and then. Um, Thursday, um, uh, board meeting. We will have our uh, student board rep interviews. Um, and after talking with all of you, um, you want to go ahead and interview all six, um, which the students also agreed with. We'll do that at the front end of our board meeting because after that. Um, we'll be asking you to vote on um, our reduction enforced plan. And then uh, once that's adopted, then we would have conversation around. Um, what are next steps as far as notification? Um, I will say that um, Dee Dee and I, um, or HR Director, we will be. Personally, um, visiting every school and delivering um, notices of reduction enforced to employees. We, we feel like it's important that um, we do that face to face. And that that comes from us. Um, I don't want our principals to have to do that. I will not let Dee Dee do that by herself. Um, so Dee Dee and I will be doing that uh, together um, after uh, the board approves that plan. Any other questions? Or thoughts? Um, I will probably uh, I'll work with Debbie to probably meet with each one of you. But individually ahead of next Thursday so we can talk more specifically and so you can see it. Um. I think it's also important and I'll, I'll just say this because again, I want to be transparent. Um, we will probably not post our board packet for next board meeting because. There's gonna be specific information about positions that are gonna be reduced. And I do not think that that is right for community to see it before we notify employees. We may get criticized on that about transparency, but I'm willing to take that. Um, just because, because I don't think it's right um, for employees to find out. Based on a list of positions we're cutting um, listed in a board packet. So. Unless you tell me otherwise.
No, because they understand that a position, they know the name. Even though it's not right there, they could know the name.
There are some positions in our district that um. You know, elementary teacher is pretty generic, but um, there are other positions that are not. And um, I just don't think it is right or sensitive um, for our. Staff to see it in a board packet and hear it from somewhere else other than. Me and Dee Dee uh, firsthand. And so uh, we'll be posting the agenda, but we will not be posting the packet.
And that would fall under um, what we have uh, rehires, resignations, uh, retirements. In that un, un a board agenda. So if somebody has resigned, will their name be in that or if they're going to retire?
So we would have the regular.
No, okay.
Board agenda, but then in addition to that, we would have the uh, reduction enforced plan, which would be its own line item.
Okay.
So the agenda will show up, you know, as normal. Um, but um. We will not be posting this unless you were to direct me otherwise. Um. Again, I, I just um, I don't think it's how we should be um, treating our, our staff.
We don't have, we don't need to take a vote on it.
No, you don't need to. We're not required to post the, the packets. We've been doing it recently because. Um, we think it's pretty important to be transparent about what we're um, discussing in the packet, you know?
And that's still there.
And, and we want to continue doing that, but for this specific board meeting. I want to make sure that our employees are notified personally and not because they saw the board packet.
Got it.
And there is potential when you are identifying positions that people would know who those employees are. If anything comes up as far as questions or um, anything you feel like we need to make sure. We have on that, that page that's gonna go live. Um, just let us know. So we want to make sure we put it out there. We'll also uh, make sure that we're. Um, listening as, as folks, uh, staff, community members give us feedback that. We need to put that information out there so people can get answers. But that's all I have. Was, you've got anything else?
Yeah, I want some music or something. Okay, thank you, Chris. Um, thanks everyone for being here. Appreciate it. Um, the next board meeting, as Chris has said, is May ninth, twenty twenty four. Six P M, regular business meeting. Uh, the location is still at uh, Bridgeline Middle School. Right?
Yes.
Leading a journey.